Good evening. This meeting with Kern County Planning Commission is called to order. A roll call. Roll call. Kirk, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ashley.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Dunbar.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver.
Here.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Commissioner member, announcements or reports? Would any commissioner or staff member like to make an announcement or report? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. You've received a copy of the minutes from the March 13th meeting. Are there any corrections?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Items withdrawn or requests for continuance. Mr. Murphy, will you review items which have been withdrawn or requests for continuances, please?
We don't have any items under that category this evening.
Okay, thank you. Move on to consent items. Mr. Murphy, will you review the consent items?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So these are items scheduled before your commission which are being recommended for approval by staff. The applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask any questions regarding this case. I would note, we do have some people in the audience that may want to pull an item off consent. I'm not 100% sure, so I'm just going to read the consent calendar in its entirety and we can just kind of go from there. So the first item this evening is case number one. This is mod number one to CUP number one, map 61. Our applicant is John and Bonnie Thompson. This project is located on the west side of Snow Sanders Road, approximately 1,500 feet south from Pozo Flat Road in the unincorporated Bakersfield area. The request is modification to conditional use permit number 61, sorry, number one, map 61, requesting continued operation of a kennel for a maximum of 25 dogs on an approximately 20.07 acre parcel in an A-zone district. The staff recommendation is to approve modification to conditional use permit in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. Case number two this evening is vesting tentative map 7387. Our applicant is Rodeo Credit Enterprises LLC by D&amp;D Engineering. This project is located on the southeast corner of Fortieth Street West and Holiday Avenue in the Rosemond area. The action before your commission this evening is approval of vesting tentative track map 7387, which proposes to divide an approximately 160 acre parcel into 591 residential lots that would range in size from 6,000 square feet to 18,934 square feet. Project includes a 1.45 acre open space lot, two open space basin lots containing 2.87 acres, and then it includes a 3.01 acre, sorry, 2.97 acres, and the second is 3.01 acres. The project includes limited design variations to the land division ordinance that would authorize blocks in excess of 1320 feet, lot depths greater than three times its width, double frontage lots, and key reverse lots. I would note that your commission did receive an addendum this evening. We received additional comments after this project and the staff report was distributed from a nearby resident. The resident had questions regarding overall site improvements. Staff did prepare an addendum to answer these questions. I would note that implementation of this project would recall, require type A street improvements, so curb, gutter, sidewalk, block wall surrounding the entire project site as well. Staff is recommending the items stand on consent at this time, and we do, and the recommendation would be to approve vesting tentative track map with the associated limited design variations, all subject to the recommended conditions of approval and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The final case this evening is case number three. This is modification to cluster plan number one, map 231, and this also includes consideration of two vesting tentative parcel track maps, numbers 7398 and 7399. The applicant for this project is also Rodeo Credit Enterprises LLC by D&amp;D Engineering, and this project is located within the same area, southwest corner of Fortieth Street West and Holiday Avenue in the Rosemond area. The request before your commission, again, is modification of cluster plan number one, map 231. The modification proposes to implement areas four and portions of areas five and six of the approved cluster plan. That would include consideration and approval of vesting tentative track map 7398, which is a 40.35 acre site, and it would be to subdivide that into 194 residential lots ranging in size from 5,000 square feet to 11,088 square feet. The site includes two open space lots that are 22,328 square feet and 3.5 acres. And this project includes limited design variations to the land division ordinance that would authorize blocks in excess of 1,320 feet and lot depths greater than three times its width. The second vesting tentative track map, this is 7399, proposes to divide a 161 acre site into 181 residential lots. They would range in size from 5,500 square feet to 13,697 square feet. It includes an 11,781 square foot open space lot. It includes two drainage lots containing a 3.04 acres and 5.56 acres. And then it also includes an approximately 116 acre designated remainder. This project includes limited design variations to the land division ordinance that would authorize blocks in excess of 1,320 feet and lot depths greater than three times the width. The staff recommendation is to approve modification of, modification of cluster plan number one, map 231, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Approve vesting tentative track maps with the associated limited design variations, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. That completes the reading of the consent calendar this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there any member of the audience that would like to speak on any of these items? Which item?
Item number one, sir.
Okay. So we'll be, we'll pull item number one. Is there any? Is there any member of the commission that wishes to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Okay. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and vote on the consent items two and three.
I'll motion to approve items two and.
What's that?
We'd like to speak on two and three.
Okay. I'll retract that. Then we'll, I guess we'll move those all to, remove them all from the consent agenda and I'll, next we'll offer public, we'll go to public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on tonight's agenda. So if you want to speak about something other than these items, this is your time and you'll be limited to two minutes. Would anybody like to speak? Okay, now we'll move on to public hearing. So first item we'll hear tonight, number one. I guess if you already read it, do we need to read it again?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, yeah, we'll have a little more detail. We will have Ms. Agent Simon. She will prepare. I believe it's Ms. Simon who will provide your commission with a, a board presentation before opening it up for public testimony.
Okay, and on item number one is the applicant here? Okay. And then, so we just have the one gentleman that wants to speak? Okay. Is there, okay, now move on staff. Will you give your report for this application, please?
Thank you, Chairman Dunbar, and good evening commissioners. The project before you tonight is modification one, conditional use permit one, map 61. The applicant is John and Bonnie Thompson. The project is located on the west side of Snow Saunders Road, south of Pozo Flat Road in Pozo, in the Pozo Flats area, that is approximately 12 miles south of Glenville and the foothills of northwest Kern Canyon. The project proposal is a request for permanent entitlement of a kennel for a maximum of 25 dogs on a 20 acre parcel with a MAP code designation from the Kern County General Plan of Extensive Agriculture and a zone classification of exclusive agriculture. The project site is subject to a previous, the previous approval to operate a dog kennel for five years and is developed with a 2,600 square foot single-family dwelling with a 400 square foot room that is utilized indoor for the kennel area with an outdoor access with a shaded 775 square foot chain link fenced area. The site also contains shaded chain link fence kennel areas and a barn and other accessory structures. The surrounding area is mountainous and rural with native vegetation and a mixture of sparse single-family dwellings, ranches and agriculturally, on agriculturally zoned and undeveloped land with a minimum of 20 acres per parcel. The applicant was granted authorization of the conditional use permit to operate the kennel for a period of five years for a toy breed of dog called Miki that ranges in a size of four to 10 pounds. The maximum number of dogs was given was 25 dogs. The reason for the five-year temporary period of approval is to allow the applicant to work through any kennel operation process and discern any problems or issues that may, that may arise, including giving the neighbors an opportunity to evaluate how the applicant operates the kennel and report back on any concerns when and if the applicant were to apply for further operational use after the five years. During the five years of operation, staff, including code enforcement and the Kern County Animal Services, have not received any official complaint that the project proponent was operating against the conditions of approval. The Kern County Animal Services has confirmed that the kennel has passed yearly inspections and as, and is in compliance for the requirements for this type of operation. There are currently 15 Mikis used in the program with a select number that are all ready, that are ready for breeding. When bred, the dogs produce small litters that are maintained by the applicant for 10 to 12 weeks before being placed in permanent homes or service dog assignments. Persons interested in purchasing a dog may contact the applicant directly through the business website as well as online services to arrange for the dog to be hand-delivered. All necessary veterinary care and vaccines are provided by Wasco Veterinary Clinic, and the dogs are continually monitored for their continued health while in the applicant's care. The kennel areas and the residents are cleaned daily to maintain a healthy environment for the dogs, and all bedding is washed weekly. Waste removal in the kennel areas is conducted daily and deposited to the Glenville dump on a weekly basis. On-site water and sewage disposal is provided by an individual water well and septic system. Staff performed a site visit on March 11th, 2025, to photograph the subject kennel operation. During the visit, the kennel areas included shaded areas, were clean and well-maintained. The dogs all appeared to be in good health and maintained good temperaments while staff reviewed the area. As expected, the dogs did bark upon staff entering the kennel area, however, quickly settled down and did not bark excessively during the remaining time of the visit. Staff noted the dogs were well-trained and listened to the commands of, by the applicant. Lastly, once staff was outside of the residence and out of sight of the dogs, the dogs were quiet. Photographs of the kennel areas have been included in the report for your commission's reference. During the course of the processing of this request, staff notified surrounding property owners within 1,000 feet of the project site and received five comments from county department noting no comment, one comment for the applicant to confirm well capacity, that was part of the originally approved project, and a letter of support for the operation from a neighbor. The project site is zoned with a classification of exclusive agriculture, which allows by right the use of breeding, raising animals, and that would include alpacas, cattle, horses, donkey, and sheep. These type of animals could be considered more intense use of the area compared to the requested small kennel operation, including producing similar sounds and odors that would not include the applicant having to obtain a conditional use permit to operate. Staff has included recommended conditions of approval to ensure the continued operation of the kennel breeding used will be in accordance with the county standards and will ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the public and to the property and residents in the vicinity. Including requirements for the applicant to maintain continued compliance with county standards, which will be confirmed at yearly inspections from animal services to ensure the health and safety of the dogs and to monitor all neighborhood compliance. Due to the applicant's continued compliance during the 25, sorry, excuse me, during the five-year term, staff is recommending the operation be approved for the permanent entitlement. Therefore, staff recommendation is approve the conditional use permit modification in accordance with recommended conditions and adopted, and adopt the suggesting findings at, excuse me, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions.
Thank you. Does applicant have an opening statement or any comments? All right, thank you. I invite those who are opposed to this request to come forward and be heard. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Jared Cope. I'm the, actually, the really the one and only neighbor to this property. I purchased my property about two years ago and I've been in a transition to moving up there. Sorry for the speaker. I'm going to just play some, play some stuff for you guys. I was really surprised to hear the staff recommendation. I'm going to try to distribute these for you guys if it's okay. I've been in contact in the last two years with the planning department, the animal services, and co-compliance 22 times. Okay, and I've got a list of this. I don't know if you guys would like to take a copy and pass that around. This list is only as of June 11th of 2024. I've also brought plenty of emails from Dennis McNamara, so planning has, has been well aware of the issues we've been having, so I don't know where the breakdown where that didn't get to, to staff was. Again, I am the, the one and only neighbor that is immediately adjacent to this property. The other neighbors are, you know, some distance apart. And it's, it's, the barking is, is non-stop. It's not like they bark when somebody walks by. We're talking four or five hours until the dogs are put inside. John is a, is a nice person. I've texted him several times. If he's home, he'll put the dogs inside, but, but I need to be clear, this is not a, hey, I pull up and the dogs bark and then they quiet down. This is dogs barking non-stop. I've brought three witnesses that have been guests at the property that if you guys would like to hear from, I can bring them up and they can attest to hours upon hours upon hours. I am going to play you guys a couple brief videos. I have about 10 hours of this. I'm not going to subject you guys to that. I'll, I'll, I'll start with a couple easy ones, and if you guys feel like you need to hear more to make a decision on this, I'd be happy to hear more. I know the conditional use permit did say that the dogs are not supposed to be barking. Animal services did make two attempts to go up there. One time they posted a notice about a half a mile from the property on a shared gate that I share with them. I do have a picture of that notice. I came back to animal services and said, hey, listen, obviously you're not going to hear anything. He didn't make it to the property. So the animal services then called and set an appointment with the Thompsons. Of course, the dogs were inside during the appointment and, and showed up for the appointment and said, oh, we didn't hear any barking. And so with that being said, guys, I'm going to play you a couple videos. This is from the deck in my backyard. It's not even really visible to their house. This is from across my pond that is actually some distance from their property. You're going to hear the creek roaring in the background, and you're going to hear the dog barking overcoming the creek. Is that, I purchased 130 acres, and about 110 of it, this is all I can hear. Hey, I, did you guys like me to keep playing, or do you want me to pause it and move on? You guys tell, you guys good? Okay, like I said, I've, I've got 10 hours here. I'm happy to play as much as you guys need to, to please give me some relief here. I'm not even touching on my, the financial burden that is put on my property. If I went to resell this house, I'd have to disclose that issue, and it would be significant. Is, I, I, it's a remote property. I, I'm a firm believer in a man should be able to do what he wants on his property. I am the one and only neighbor to this. It, it is really, really impacting my quality of life and the, and the value of my property. I have, again, I have all the evidence. I have seeked relief relentlessly with the county. If you guys would like to talk to Dennis, he's probably really sick of hearing from me. Okay, and I'm, and I'm just not getting anywhere. They're just, Animal Services is not equipped to make an hour drive. There's several gates to get into it. I understand this is a unique situation. I am pleading with you guys to please deny this. There are plenty of puppies out there. The pound is full of them. People can get them there. I do not think that we needed another dog breeding facility at this particular time, at this location. Would it help for me to have my witnesses come forward so they can attest to the hours of barking, not, not just moments of barking? Would you guys like to hear from them?
I mean, if they want to speak in, in opposition of it, they're welcome to come up.
I'm going to bring up Mike Bettis was a guest at my property recently, and he can attest.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just here to attest to that.
Can you state your name, please?
Mike Bettis.
Thank you.
And I'm here just to attest to, to Mr. Cope's testimony here that the, the dogs are relentless and loud and noisy.
Okay, thank you.
Again, are there any questions? I, like I said, I feel like, I was really surprised to hear the staff's recommendation. I have several emails from Planning. They notified me to be here. I can't remember the exact contact. If it's pertinent, I can pull it up. But Brian Rutledge and Dennis McNamara were who I communicated with quite a bit, and then more recently, it was turned over to someone else. She's the one that notified me to be here tonight to, to help put an end to this. So I'm, I'm super surprised to hear that the staff recommended approval of this, and then just floored that they said there was no formal complaints. I don't know if I needed to send a pigeon with a letter or how you get a formal complaint in, but I felt like showing up, emailing, calling, you know, again, I, I feel like I've been a burden on the county, and I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to give some relief, guys.
Thank you.
Anything else I can do to help explain my case?
No, we'll, we'll be open for questions after we kind of get through the process.
Okay. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition? I invite those in support of the request to come forward and be heard.
My name is John Thompson. It is true that Mr. Cope had texted me on two different occasion, occasions. I've kept the texts. John, your dogs are barking. I was at church, said I'll get that handled. Since that last text from him, whenever we leave the property, we take the smaller dogs, we lock them inside. That's so that they don't see what's going on out there. Mr. Cope comes up occasionally. It's not a regular time. So the dogs are used to no activity going on around the property. They don't see stuff, and then somebody will show up. There's gunshots going on. There's side-by-sides driving around. The dogs are not used to that, and so when we're there, everything's calm. When we're not there, we now lock the dogs inside in case he does show up. We get worried about that. We stress out about going, I wonder if he's going to show up today. There's equipment going off, digging stuff around the pond, around the creek. The dogs see it, the dogs hear it, and so we've taken, locking them in. We've bought shock collars, bark collars for the, the larger dogs that I have. They see dogs running loose, they start barking at those dogs. And then when those dogs start barking, the smaller dogs will start barking. If we're there, we run outside, we push them inside, close it up, and handle that. If we're not going to be there, if we know that we're both going to be off the property, we make sure that they're, they're locked inside. We always have one person there. This has caused quite a bit of stress for us because we've, we don't want to be creating that kind of thing. Mr. Cope was up there today. I didn't hear him texting me saying, hey, the dogs are going off, the dogs are barking, that, that they're out of control. So there was a time when he, there was two different times when we had left the property, nobody was there, and during the time that we had left, he had come, come up. There's gunshots going off the back porch, shooting at different things, hours at the nighttime, four-by-fours running around. That stirs the dogs up, other dogs running around. So we've done everything that we can. We've put up barriers to stop the dogs from seeing stuff that's going on. We've, we've blocked some different things. So we've changed the way that we've done things in order to be compliant, and I haven't heard from Mr. Cope in a long time that there was a problem. It's been a long time since I, again, I, I have the last text that he sent, and it was a while ago that there was an issue, and since then, I've not even heard from him saying, hey, there's still an issue. This is still an issue. We believe that with the modifications that we were doing, putting the dogs inside the house when we left, and putting the bark collars on the dogs that were the bigger dogs, that that problem was resolved. This surprises me that he's come forward tonight. That's, this does surprise me because the last text that he had sent me was a while ago, and we thought we'd made adjustments, and I have not heard from him about it since then. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Sir, am I able to respond to that?
No, we're going to move on to staff comments, and then if we, then we'll, then we'll have questions for you, I think.
Okay, thanks.
Would staff like to make any additional comments on this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, happy to answer any questions your commission has. I guess the only comment I would specifically just address here just is the, the question about notification in terms of anybody opposed or anything along those lines. You know, things change when it comes to land use on a daily basis. You know, our comments specifically, we were aware because Mr. Cope has called before, but since we sent out our hearing notice, we got no comment opposed to the question, opposed to the, and again, I'm not discounting anything other than, you know, staff can only go by once we send our notices out, and things change in land use on a daily basis. So, you know, for all we knew, something had been agreed to, or who knows? So, you know, I just provide that as comment in terms of, you know, staff's summary in terms of we didn't have any comments opposed, and so that is where that came from. But other than that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. This hearing is now closed for public testimony. Open to the commission for questions and comments. You guys have anything?
All right, first of all, I guess I have a question. First one for you, counsel. I happen to know Mr. Cope and his ex very, very well. I've done business with him in the past. Do you require me to recuse myself on this matter? I have no vested interest.
I, I would know, need to know a lot more detail than.
We're both real estate brokers, and we've worked together in the past.
Even at that, I would need to know some more detail that we probably shouldn't be discussing in this sort of open session. I will also say there's another part of this that's concerning to me. We've heard a videotape today, which somebody's bringing, is evidence. It hasn't been presented to the other side except for here. There's no time on it, there's no date on it. We have some evidentiary problems, and I think in due course, we should at least postpone this hearing moving forward so that some of that evidence can be supplied and presented to the other side, because otherwise, we have a due process problem.
I agree.
That I think we need to really think about.
So if we want to continue this, should we just need to make a motion?
If, if anybody has any more testimony or something they want to present today, you should take it, but I, I do think, given the evidence that's being submitted, we should postpone it, and we should also tell anybody who wants to submit any evidence further to give it to us in advance because surprise, you know, this, this isn't trial by surprise.
Sir, I really need to make a comment on that. I've sent tons of videos to Dennis McNamara at the planning department. I'm not sure how else to get them to you guys, and everything I have is dated timestamp.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and continue this, or we'll make a motion and see if we can continue it, and then we can get all that stuff in front of everyone.
I'm happy to get it to him. I thought he was the right point of contact.
Okay, I'll call for a motion.
I think in light of counsel's advice, I, I would motion that we continue this so that the evidence can be shared equally amongst the, the vested parties and that we can, we can have a fair discussion about it.
Due to the evidentiary issues as well as possible recusal of myself, possibly, we have to work on counsel with that later. I'll second that motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Before we go forward here, real quick, I just need to make sure that, you know, a continuance recommendation has to have a date. It does take time for staff to prepare the staff reports, kind of go through everything, and two weeks is, is a very short period of time because a lot of times, the staff reports and everything are due almost two weeks before. So I would recommend, at the very least, you continue this project until your April, if it is your desire to continue it, until at least April 24. If not, May 8 would be the two recommendations, I would say, to provide sufficient time for staff to receive any additional information and then have time to appropriately prepare a staff report and, and bring it forward for another hearing. So one of those two dates, I think, would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Through the chair, I would, thanks for that information. I would amend my motion then to, I know a little bit about what staff works on, so I would amend that to the, my motion to, to continue that to May 8, did you say?
To the 24th, right?
April 24th or May 8th would be appropriate.
I would say May 8th. Like I said, I know what you guys have going.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, please vote on screen.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, so.
Could I add to that? Mr. Murphy, that you would please provide some guidance to Mr. Cope about how to get that information to him.
I would. Mr. Cope, our project planner for this project is Ms. Sarah Eichenhorst. Sarah, would you please raise your hand? She is the person, she's right over there, just, so she is the person that is actively processing this place for the department, and she's responsible for taking any comments and everything along those lines. So she would be who you want to work with.
Craig Murphy, sir?
Yes.
So we, we emailed extensively about this as well.
I was surprised I didn't yet have a comment when the project was presented, that you didn't provide a comment.
I thought I just showed up to make my comment. So that's, that's my error. I appreciate the time. I'll get her contact info afterwards. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, move on to item number two. Is the applicant, or they're, so, so item number two, I'll go ahead and let the staff read the details.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I believe we'll actually have our other assistant director, Mr. Paul Johnson, make today's presentation. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, commissioners, members of the audience. Paul Johnson, Assistant Planning Director. This project is vesting tentative tract map 7387. The applicant is Rodeo Credit Enterprises LLC by D&amp;D Engineering, and project representatives are present in the audience tonight. The project is located in the Roseman area, generally situated along 40th Street, north of Avenue A, and south of Roseman Boulevard. The site is currently undeveloped, as are the surrounding properties to the south and west. Properties to the north are developed with single-family residences, a park and a school. There is a property to the east that contains a residence, but otherwise, the eastern properties are all undeveloped. Vesting tentative tract map 7387 contains 160 acres, and the applicant is proposing to subdivide the land into 591 residential lots, ranging in size from 6,000 square feet to almost 19,000 square feet. Also included are open space, amenity, and drainage basin lots totaling approximately 7.5 acres. The request includes limited design variations to the land-division ordinance to authorize blocks in excess of 1,320 feet, blocks less than two tiers wide, lot depths greater than three times the width, double frontage lots, and key reverse corner lots. As part of the public notification process, comments were received from various agencies. Those comments are summarized in the staff report along with staff's response, and each comment letter is included as an attachment to the report. Staff also received four comment letters from neighboring property owners. The comments range from support of the project, if the homes are constructed to a certain standard, to opposition of the project based on potential impacts to schools, traffic, and emergency services. A more detailed description of each of those comments is provided in the staff report along with staff's response. Additionally, these letters are also attached to your report. As Mr. Murphy noted, subsequent to release of the staff report, additional comments were received and provided to your commission in an addendum. Staff appreciates the input of those comments and has addressed each of those in the addendum. On March 12 of this year, a subdivision review committee meeting was held. This meeting was attended by various county departments and the applicant. The committee concluded that the project sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings and recommended that your commission approve the request. Staff has concluded that this project aligns with the Roseman specific plan's development goals by providing housing and infrastructure improvements while maintaining environmental and zoning compliance. Therefore, it is this department's recommendation that your commission approve vesting tentative tract map with associated limited design variations, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. This completes staff's presentation and available for questions.
Does applicant have any open statements or comments?
Good evening, Chairman Dunbar and Commissioners. My name is Chris Panero. I'm with Rodeo Credit Enterprises, and I'm here tonight along with my engineer of record, Henrik Nazarian. If you have any questions for us this evening, we're here to answer anything that you might have. Thank you to staff. We've been working with them closely over the years and really appreciate all their help. We agree with the staff report and conditions for the proposed project as we believe they are compatible with applicable goals and policies of the Roseman specific plan, which include orderly growth and development, development of efficient density patterns, availability of public services, and development of a variety of housing types and price ranges. And again, we're here to answer any questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
I invite those who are opposed to this request to come forward and be heard. Please state your name for the record.
Retired Lieutenant Colonel Arnold Bowen. We're not really opposed to the process of the project that you're looking to, to build here. We're, we're kind of transplants to California, okay? But we did retire here, and we realized that the little parcel of land right there that we moved into, I don't know if you can zoom in on it, there's a neighborhood right past Holiday, which is called Terra Soul. That neighborhood right there was one of the last things built over there, and the concern is, as you build the Holiday Street out to accommodate this, this parcel land, actually, both parcels of land, what is the plan there? Because what we see is traffic patterns, the traffic pattern that people spoke of, that neighborhood becomes a crossway to avoid the school zone. And so the street that is Park Center is not a through street, though on many of the maps, it looks as though it is. It's actually a blocked off-road with a barrier to the park. That is what they called West Park. It's a very nice, well-developed area in Roseman, so people like to come that way.
There's a neighborhood right past Holiday, which is called Terra Soul. That neighborhood right there was one of the last things built over there. And the concern is, as you build the Holiday Street out to accommodate this parcel of land, actually, both parcels of land, what is the plan there? Because what we see is traffic patterns, the traffic pattern that people spoke of, that neighborhood becomes a crossway to avoid the school zone. And so, the street that is Park Center is not a through street, though on many of the maps, it looks as though it is. It's actually a blocked off road with a barrier to the park. That is what they called West Park. It's a very nice, well-developed area in Roseman, so people like to come that way. The concern is now that if we do not have the roads going through there, which I really just don't see on the map, and I guess it's really a matter of clarification for me, what is the traffic pattern plan going forward? So, that's the reason why we came all the way here, just to have a conversation, at least have our voices heard. It's not that we're opposed to it. I think growth is great, but we just need to make sure that it's going to make sense. And so, that small street that is Park Center, if it remains a through street, then we already have enough people parking in the shadows right there. Now, we have cars that will basically flow through that little bitty neighborhood, and there are myriad of small children that live in that area. And so, with 600, 700 houses going in, I mean, I don't know how much time you spend in Roseman. It's all aerospace. I think Mojave has a steel mill that's going in, and there are other programs that are coming to North of Grumman and Lockheed Martin, as well as the base. So, we know the populace will grow. It's just a matter of making sure that they can flow in and flow out without basically trying to get everybody on 40th Street, or any of the side streets, to help them get on the 40th Street. So, I just need to know... That was my only question. What is the traffic pattern? You know, because that's a concern. Because we purchased and we built in that little bitty area because of the peace and the quiet, and, you know, just the relative safety. But, you put 500 people behind you, well, you get what you get, and we all know that. And so, that was the question.
Okay. Thank you. There anyone else in opposition that would like to speak? Anyone in support that would like to speak on this issue? Does the applicant have any closing statements? Thank you. Would staff like to make any additional comments on this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'll provide some initial comments, and I'll let Mr. Johnson provide any follow-up, if he wants to, specifically regarding the design. I think there are two questions here, just to kind of just to provide, you know, how traffic and everything would work, is first, this project itself, for all identified roadways that are part of our plan element, if they touch this property, they're going to be required to dedicate the appropriate right-of-way, and then build those streets, curb gutter sidewalks, to type A street improvements. So, from the project site itself, and then any other project that may be discussed today, this is located in a type A project improvement area. So, before any development, as part of that initial development, those improvements would be put in. A second question, which... And again, I apologize, I didn't quite get his last name, but our commenter just talked about just the overall traffic plan and things along those lines. The other thing I would note, in addition to the applicant that would be required to make these initial improvements, they would also be required to pay... This is an area subject to transportation impact fees. And so, the Kern County Public Works Department maintains a list of any roadway improvements that are needed outside of curb gutter sidewalks to this street. So, that would be things like traffic lights, or four-way stops, or, you know, any other type of improvement that they have. This project would pay its fair share for those, and then, when the traffic developed in such a manner that the Kern County Public Works Department determined that such an improvement was needed, then they would implement that improvement through the fees that have been collected over the years for this area. So, there's really a couple of different things that go to address specific traffic patterns when it comes to development like this. That's kind of an overview. And then, I don't know if Mr. Johnson wants to provide any specific comments regarding the western boundary of this proposed tract.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Murphy. So, 40th Street, right now, you can see where it comes down, and it starts coming out. Eventually, that will come through here, and then back down over here. So, it'll cut through the track. Park Center?
Park Center. Yeah, it goes...
Park Center is, from what it appears right now, which is here, will not come through here because the other tracks that we'll be talking about tonight are actually located over here. And it looks something... It looks something like this. Here's the site right now that we're talking about, and then the other two maps are over on this site over here. So, these two maps will butt up next to each other without Park Center coming through, but 40th Street will come through here and then down.
Good. So, that answers your question? All right. Hearing's now closed. Public testimony open for the Commission for comments or questions?
I don't think I have any questions. It seems like our issue just got kind of adjudicated there in the big scheme of things. So, I would, first of all, thank Colonel Bowman for his service and for coming out, participating in the process, and I would make a motion for approval if nobody else has comments.
I'll second.
And one final thing, Colonel. I'd like to thank you for your service as well. Former Navy myself, but thank you for coming down and participating in that.
Thank you. So, your motion... Wait a second. Vote on screen, please.
Four eyes, one absent. Motion carries.
Mr. Murphy, is there any appeal, right to appeal?
There is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For projects for the Planning Commission, action is final. Those actions are subject to an appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed at the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $562 on forms we have available at the department and on our website. For track maps, which is this case specifically, that appeal must be filed within 10 days from the date of decision of your Commission. Any such appeal, again, must be accompanied by that appeal fee of $562. If no appeal is received, the action of your Commission is final.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item number three. Staff will give a report or presentation for this application.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson will be presenting that again.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I believe Lieutenant Colonel Bowman, was that correct?
Bowman.
Bowman. I'm just going to go through this rather quick, as it sounds like he's satisfied with our response. But, this project here, again, the map that you just approved was located here. So, this is actually three interrelated requests that we have. This is a modification of a cluster plan, number one, map 231, and vesting tentative track map 7398, and vesting tentative track map 7399. 7398 is located here with the request, and this covers approximately 40 acres, with the request to subdivide into 194 residential lots, ranging in size from 5,000 square feet to just over 11,000 square feet. Track 7399 is really a two parts. You have approximately 40 acres right in here. This 40 acres will be subdivided into 181 residential lots, ranging in size from 5,500 square feet to just over 13,500 square feet. And then, you're going to have a designated remainder of 161 acres right here that is not proposed for any development at this time. Again, as with the other map, we did receive comments on this from department agencies. We did not receive any public comments from citizens of the great Kern County. On March 12th of this year, the subdivision review committee held a meeting. It was attended by county representatives and the applicant. The committee concluded that the project sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings and recommended that your Commission approve the project. So, therefore, as with the previous map, it is this department's recommendation that your Commission approve, and in this case, modification of cluster plan number one, map 231, subject to recommended conditions of approval. Approve vesting tentative track map 7398 and 7399, with associated limited design variations, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, applicant, do you have any comments? Any more comments from you guys? All right. Staff, any more comments? Okay, the hearing's now closed. To public testimony, open to Commission for questions or comments? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I would happily second.
Okay, vote on screen.
Four eyes, one absent. Motion carries.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So, just like the previous project, where projects before your Commission are final, those actions are subject to an appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person. No development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. Again, the appeal can be filed at the Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing of $562 on forms available at the department and on our website. This is a track map, so that appeal must be filed within 10 days from and including the date of tonight's decision. If no appeal is received with the required fee, your Commission's action is final.
Thank you. Adjournment, if there's no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
And I will second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.